About that, I'd like to call the March 18th, 2019 meeting of the New Canaan Board of Education to order. First up on the agenda is to approve the minutes from February 4th. Have a motion. Deanna, second. Sheri, all those in favor? Any abstentions? Andrea? Next is to review and approve the agenda.
I'd like to amend this evening's agenda to add a motion to approve a new Board of Education member, Ms. Reeves, to serve out the unexpired term of retiring Board Member Hazel Hobbs.
Any discussion? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, we'll add that. Where are we going to add that?
Action items.
Okay, and action items. Thank you. Okay, next is special recognition for retiring Board Member Hazel Hobbs. Dr. Letzey.
Good evening. It's my privilege tonight to say thank you to one of the most knowledgeable, committed, insightful, dignified, and caring educators that I've ever had the honor to know. After 12 years of exemplary service as a New Canaan Board of Education member with three terms as Chair, Ms. Hazel Hobbs is retiring from the Board of Education. Hazel leaves a powerful and lasting legacy, and everyone associated with the New Canaan Public Schools will continue to benefit from her service for years to come. Hazel's professional experience provided her with an extremely valuable and rare understanding of both the complexity and the significance of our work. As you know, I believe that education is the most important work on the planet, and I also know that Hazel agrees with me wholeheartedly. In her career, Hazel served as Principal of two public elementary schools in Greenwich, and at both schools, the attendance rates, the test scores, and the school climate improved dramatically. After distinguishing herself as Principal, Hazel accepted the challenge to become the founding head of Pear Tree Point School in Darien, which was also a resounding success. While experiencing great success as administrator, Hazel always remembered what it was like to be a teacher. Both her mother and grandmother were teachers, and she began her career as a teacher here in New Canaan at Center School years ago. Hazel's great respect and admiration and appreciation for teachers has always guided her decision-making as a leader and as a board member. Hazel's involvement with education goes well beyond her career responsibilities. She believes in the power of learning for people of all ages, and regularly taught parenting workshops, teacher workshops, and principal workshops. Hazel's financially supported professional learning opportunities for teachers, including personally sponsoring programs for preschool teachers to learn to teach pre-literacy schools to their kids. As a philanthropist, a teacher, and a leader, Hazel has an unwavering commitment to help improve the lives of those around her through the power of education, and she's a role model to all of us. Obviously, Hazel's determined, resolute, and persistent when needed, but what truly sets Hazel apart is the size of her heart. Hazel truly loves our work. She values each and every child, respects the hard work of our teachers and our administrators, and brings a gracious dignity to all that she does. All of us serve with pride knowing that Hazel's in our corner. In the 12 years that she's been on the Board of Education, Hazel's had a positive impact on the lives of thousands of children. Hazel, it's been a highlight of my career, and the greatest of honors to serve as your superintendent, and I'll never forget the many lessons you taught me through the years. From all of us in the New Canaan Public Schools, we thank you for championing our children, our teachers, our schools, and our profession. You make us proud to be educators. And on behalf of the school district, I have a small little gift for you. And I think you might need this at home. But that's a good use. And we're all so very grateful, Hazel, for all that you've done for us. I also have a proclamation from the first electman who regrets that he can't be here with us tonight. It reads, "Whereas Hazel Hobbs is a lifelong educator and has lived in New Canaan for over 45 years, and whereas Hazel has given her time and talent serving as a member on the Board of Education for over 12 years and three terms as their Chair, and whereas throughout the years Hazel has committed her experience and time to the education community as a teacher, a principal, and founder of the Pear Tree Point School, and has volunteered her service on many committees, workshops, and professional groups, and has won numerous community awards, and whereas Hazel has dedicated a lifetime of tireless love and commitment as an advocate for both students and teachers, and has served New Canaan and all of Fairfield County with distinction and dignity, it is because she exemplifies the best qualities of our community that Kevin Moynihan, first electman of the town of New Canaan, declares Tuesday, March 19th, 2019, as Hazel Hobbs Day in the town of New Canaan." And now I'd like to invite Ms. Birdsall. Birdsall, the President of the NCEA.
Hazel, on behalf of every teacher in New Canaan, I want to thank you for everything you've always done for us. We understand how much you've done for us, and I'd like to present you with this amendment. Hazel Hobbs, a friend to teachers from the New Canaan Education System.
Any other comments from the board? Thank you, Dr. Letzey. Deanna?
Yeah. Okay, so I have a letter that Marian McDonald forwarded to me. She was a teacher with Hazel, and asked that I read this, and then I have my own comment as well. Starts off, it says, "Fifty years ago in 1969, Hazel was a founding Board Member of the First Presbyterian Nursery School, helping to create an outstanding program of early childhood education. The following year, she arrived at Center School with her eldest son, Mike Junior, who was starting kindergarten. This would be the start of a 13-year career at the school. The following year, Mike Junior was in my first grade class, and Hazel volunteered to be my writing aide, helping every week as the children learned to compose stories and reports. Soon, she was PTC President, creating a film documenting the curriculum that was being developed at Center School. Then, since everyone was so amazed by her intelligence, teaching abilities, and incredible work ethic, she was offered a position as a second-grade teacher. After several successful years in that role, she became the Center School Writing Coordinator. Hazel was an essential member of the Center School team in so many capacities until the school's closing in 1983. The following year, Hazel was offered a position in Greenwich as a principal. Though she had to leave New Canaan, this opportunity for her professional growth benefited thousands of children from minority and impoverished backgrounds with outstanding educational success. She received many awards and accolades over those years for her innovative programs. In 1996, another opportunity for Hazel to develop her educational expertise was offered. After spending a year developing the curriculum, hiring faculty, and overseeing the construction of the physical space, she became the founding headmistress of the Pear Tree Point School, a private elementary school in Darien. There, she created a community of engaged learners, excellent teachers, and devoted parents. Throughout her career, she has always found time for extensive volunteer work, often serving on boards of organizations that help children, families, and communities. Hazel was instrumental in the founding of the Stepping Stones Children's Museum and was a longtime Board Member, ensuring that the continuation and expansion of the original ideas she helped formulate. Most recently, she has lent her experience and expertise as an educator to the Board of Education right here in New Canaan. These are incredible accomplishments over half of a century, but enumerating them doesn't begin to speak to the incredible woman, educator, volunteer, wife, mother, and friend that she is. Hazel devotes herself wholeheartedly, body, mind, and soul to her endeavors. She spends an inordinate amount of time researching and preparing for every project to be sure that she will deliver the best possible results. Hazel truly cares about the work she does, and more importantly, she cares about those she serves. She always has a positive suggestion to offer and words of encouragement. Most importantly, Hazel is kind and thoughtful and understanding and empathetic. She is a truly remarkable woman who has given more time and energy to the education of children than anyone I know. Hazel is the friend we all wish we could have, and I have been fortunate for almost 50 years to call her my friend. To Hazel with love and best wishes for continued success and happiness, Mary Ellen McDonald." Okay, sorry, I have my own remarks, so you'll have to listen to me for a few more minutes. So I'd like to thank Hazel not only for her tireless commitment to education and the children of New Canaan, but for also serving as a role model and mentor to me personally. I still remember the first time Hazel asked me to meet her for coffee before I ran for the Board of Education, and she and I didn't really know each other back then, and I could tell by her line of questioning that she was making sure that I was going to be a Board Member who had the best interests of the students, faculty, and staff of New Canaan Public Schools always at heart before giving me the Hobbs deal of approval. And for those of you who've spent enough time in this community, this is indeed high praise. Sorry. I knew I was going to have a hard time with this. After being elected to the Board of Ed, Hazel continued to nurture those of us who were new to the Board of Ed, making sure we understood our roles and that we were all up to speed on the latest BoE issues. Sorry. I was lucky enough to serve as BoE Secretary under Hazel for two years when she was Chair, and was in almost daily contact with her during that time. I loved hearing all her stories about her time as an elementary principal in Greenwich. Many of those stories made me even more appreciative to be in New Canaan. Under Hazel's leadership, the Board of Ed established communications committees because she saw the necessity for the Board keeping parents and the community more regularly informed about what was happening on the Board of Ed. She also established the Agenda Planning Meeting that included all members of the Executive Board. Hazel, I can't thank you enough for your leadership and mentorship to me over the past five years and to the Board of Ed for the past 12. I'm truly going to miss having you on the Board, but I know that Mike and your entire family will enjoy spending more time with you. And I have your phone number memorized. For those times, I'll need your advice and counsel. Enjoy this next space.
If I can say too much after those nice things, nice words, and without telling you the story that behind the scenes, she has been picking me up and driving me to every one of the meetings because of the insurity about my car driving at night, and when they started tearing up the road to the dramatic point that I felt that perhaps it would be sinking my car. It was wonderful that she just came, no complaints, nothing, and gave me a ride to and from all of our meetings. So it shows, I think, the wonderful feeling that she's created on the Board, and the Board works such a wonderful team, which is important to make sure that we do the things and make decisions that are the right decisions or the ones that will certainly be the best for the kids. I'm absolutely at loss. What I want to do is go down and talk to each one of you and say the special thing that I remember you did while I was here, and the thing that you did that so impressed me that I think about this Board frequently and think, how did you all get together to be in the same place because you've got so many gifts to give this town and to give the children that come to school here? And it's something that I sit there in awe that it's all gotten together and happened, and it really is a wonderful thing. I can't, if I start on one person, I'll have to do an all. What I have to say about our head, talking just for one minute about when we first met you and interviewed for the job, and I can remember there was a bestselling book about the best places that where the best educational systems were taking effect. And so at lunchtime, as I'm trying to be inconspicuous, I asked Brian, had he seen this new book or heard about this new book? He said, yes, he did. In fact, see, the purpose of the book was to recommend what was good about different countries and what in their educational systems. And not only had he heard the book, he had gone as soon as hearing about what was going on in...
Finland.
Finland, went to Finland to investigate to see if it really was going on and how we could learn from it. That just absolutely sent me on wings, saying that's the person that we have to have come to New Canaan. So I'm so glad that you're here and know that you'll take care of what needs to happen as you've done so beautifully ever since the whole time we've been here. Each one of you, I could say something about how I'm, as I said, I'm impressed with what you do with your personal lives, what you do with your kids. It's really a wonderful place to be, to know that there's so many good things happening for kids in this world, and they're all circled in this room. So if any time you ever feel that you are worried about something that's going on, you know that these people are dedicating their lives to making education and children's lives better. I think the only thing I can possibly say is what I wrote down, and makes no sense to say now in line with what we've been talking about, but just to make sure, I'll make sure. I also wanted to mention, you have a number of people who have relatives in their family that go back and have been teachers and educators or something, and certainly knowing that our new Chair has that also in effect. To me, it impresses since I have two generations beyond going back from myself. I mean, you can't get out of it. It's all advice, am I saying it the right way? Lots of tips and everything to go along. Thank you for all the kind words and warm wishes. I would just like to say what a privilege and pleasure it's been to serve on the Board. I've enjoyed knowing and working with all the Board Members, the Administration, and the teachers during my tenure. With very high expectations our taxpayers have for the quality of our schools, I am proud of the results we have achieved together. I wish you all the best going forward. I just want to say thank you again. Thank you for taking the time. Thank your kids for the time that they give up not being with their parents. That's appreciated. And your spouses, and I wish you all the best of luck and know it will be a successful time from this point on. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so you cut in really fast, so I didn't have time to like get my words in. But I just wanted to say how much we're going to miss you, and you have been such a pillar on our Board and in our community. I've known the Hobbs family a very long time, and one of the main reasons I'm here is because of you. I kind of told you before, but I'll never forget. I was on vacation with my husband, and I'm like, can you just get that phone really quick? He ends up talking to Hazel for like an hour on our vacation about why I should be on the Board, and he's like, I think you need to do this. So anyway, and like Deanna, you really taught me the ropes, and you really are a role model for all of us. Always respectful, always a listener, always have the kids at heart, which is the most important thing, and you've taught us all so much, and you always stand for what you believe in also. You listen to everyone, and you're, you know, again, we all sometimes disagree, and you're always the very sound voice in it all, and you are going to be sincerely missed, and, you know, we are happy that you're going to go be able to spend more time with your family, but we're going to miss you a lot, and thank you for everything.
So I'm realizing we should do a show of hands of who here was recruited by Hazel Hobbs who served in the education. Because my hand is also raised, and Hazel, you are the reason I'm sitting here, and I just have to say also that you've been such a powerful role model for me, and really coming on the Board and watching you and learning from you with your poise and your grace and your steely determination to advocate for what's right for the students and the teachers in our school district. It's been an incredible learning experience for me. I mean, you really, truly have inspired me, and, you know, I'll always hold you in my heart, and we will continue to build on your legacy. You can go home and have fun with your family and be rest assured that we will continue on this journey in your name. So thank you.
Hazel, I just wanted to add to it and say it's been a wonderful 12 years serving on the Board of Ed with you, and when I think about you, immediately I think passionate about education and follow-through. I have never met anybody who's so dedicated, who's so determined. Some people in the Town Council might think... Some people in the town council might think relentless, but I think more just always going that extra mile, that extra step to make certain that every student in this district has the benefit of the best possible education we can give them. And that's been a wonderful experience to serve alongside of you, and I've learned so much doing it, and I so appreciate it. So I know you're going to continue to read about education. I hope you'll continue to send us emails, and if we go astray, please let us know. You're just around the corner. And I just have to say, you do a lot of presentations, or we've listened to a lot of presentations, and I have never seen so many smiling faces in this audience. And I wish you could just turn around and see how thrilled everybody is to be here, to be cheering you on for all that you've given this district. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Hazel, on behalf of the board. We have a gift for you as well.
You have to open it here.
I think we all know Hazel a little bit too well. You have to show us this off. Okay, now.
Put it up here for display. Beautiful colors. You're always supposed to open an envelope for a person.
So well-mannered, still educated.
Still teaching us.
That's probably the first job of every mother, I guess, to pass on. Everybody's saying, thank you for your years of dedicated service to New Canaan Public Schools and the children of New Canaan. All our best, New Canaan Board of Education. Thank you very much. Now I'll open the gift. As far as extra things that'll be happening in our house, I think we're going to continue watching the Rangers. It's definitely, it is definitely an important part of our marriage. We did watch them on their honeymoon. Should know and then teach that to any of your students, that sometimes the future comes out early.
Just flip it over. Just turn it over.
We know your weakness, Hazel.
Oh my gosh, and it is a weakness, how to certainly say, chocolate. Everything that you can imagine saying, New Canaan Board of Ed on it, little school bus, apple, as a teacher, 2007, scissors, oh.
We're going to take a brief break.
Yes.
And within the guidelines that she...
All right, next up is comments from the public. To ensure the public's right to be heard, the board has set aside time during the meeting for public comments. Two minutes will be allotted to each speaker and a maximum of 15 minutes to each subject. Is there anyone who would like to be heard? Okay. Next is reports in recognition. First is the alternative high school program update with Ms. Pianka.
Good evening. Before we begin with introductions, I wanted to publicly thank the board for their ongoing support of the alternative program. And I can assure you that over the course of the last nine months, this may sound cliche, but you have changed lives. And there are a number of very happy students, and as a result of that, happy parents who are successful as a result of the resources that you've provided for them. And I can't control my enthusiasm. On some days, I am known as the stalker who stands out in the hallway when the doors open and listens to the instruction, and it makes me smile. It has truly been a wonderful nine months, and you'll hear some very exciting news about it. So before you meet our fabulous staff, I'd like to introduce Bill Tesper, who is our special education administrator for Launch and the high school and grade seven and eight temporarily. And Bill has kind of shepherded the process through our committee and with the high school administration and on to our staff for the program, has kind of been watching over things for the last nine months. And I'm very excited to introduce you to him and for you to meet the staff and hear about the program.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity. I'd like to have some of the other staff come up. Bob Stevenson, who's our regular teacher in the program, Andrea McGilpin, who is the clinical director and social worker, and Colleen Bailey, who is a special education teacher there at the program. And we are so excited to share with you the outstanding educational opportunities that we're able to provide these students, thanks to your support. If you remember back, the original impetus behind the program itself was, you know, the school district was seeing an increase in the number of students who needed a more therapeutic setting for their educational programming, or students who just needed a different setting for their alternative program, for their educational programming. You know, one that wasn't the traditional high school setting. They weren't successful in this program here at the high school. So we were looking for an opportunity to provide them with another way to deliver the same quality education that they would get at the high school, but in a different way. So that was the original impetus behind the program, and it's been an outstanding year thanks to these fine people and the other staff members who are working in the program. The students have, you know, I keep referring to it as the alternative program, but the students there, early in the year, were looking for another name or nomenclature to go by. So they've affectionately turned it as a downtown campus. So we'll give you some information about how the program has gone this year and open it up to any questions. So I'll turn it over to Andrea for these first couple of slides.
Hi, again, I'm Andrea McGilpin. I'm the clinical director. I haven't met many of you, so nice to meet you. One of the things coming into this year that was so exciting was that we had a group of students that really were able to be a part of developing a program where they felt safe, where they felt that they were really being provided with a supportive education, and one that they were also able to kind of really tune into things that would feel empowering to them in this new environment. But we also really wanted to make sure that we were continuing to build community, not only in kind of the larger New Canaan High School scale, but also in their space. So we really felt strongly that we wanted to include them in creating their own mission statement. So really, from kind of September, when we started, we took really that next month or so to, as we got to know the kids and build relationships, to have them start to identify things that were important to them and create their own mission statement. So what they came up with was students and teachers working together to create a safe and supportive environment that embraces individual differences. Collectively, we empower the overall growth and development of students so they can move forward and contribute to the world in meaningful ways, which we felt was really powerful. We have 10 students. They all took, you know, really great pride in creating this, and really, part of it was that we really wanted them to have buy-in, because without them wanting to be a part of this, you know, that really is going to be indicative of their success in the program. And we wanted to foster that success. We wanted to create a place where they could build their self-esteem, feel like leaders, build relationships with each other, and really provide a consistent and constant place for them. And I, you know, they've really enjoyed this process, so.
And you'll see the downtown campus logo there. That is the, how do you call the logo or whatever, for their newsletter that they've started to produce. And there's no modesty with the best part of New Canaan since 2018. So they're loving it. But they're enjoying it. That's issue number one. Issue number two is out.
So for students that, you know, are part of our program, you know, we're lucky in that because we're small and because we have a lot of individualized instruction, clinical support, support from all the, you know, teachers, that we can really take a broad range of students. So we have students with us that are there for, you know, social, emotional concerns. They've been kind of school avoidant, had some, you know, anxiety, depression. Students that have medical issues, you know, whether it be Lyme or other chronic things that are keeping them out of either getting into school or, you know, being part of a larger classroom setting. And really, for stepping stone for students that really need that transition, whether they're coming from, you know, inpatient or, you know, they've been home and are coming from an outpatient, that we provide kind of the steps that they need to be successful, whether they're going to stay with us or whether they're going to transition back to the high school. And also for students that need credit recovery, we're really able to provide that individual support for them so that they can be successful in their academic career. So we're fostering kind of both the social, emotional piece as well as the academic, academic piece.
So currently at the downtown campus, the staffing is allocated as follows. There's a 1.0 general education teacher that is divided up between point two of English, history, science, and math, the core subject areas. And then we have electives. Currently, we are running two different electives. One is an art-based elective called design thinking, and the other is a music elective, which has been a compilation of music history and music appreciation. And then, more recently, Leo Fix, who's the orchestra teacher here, he came to me and said, "Bill, is there any way we can get some money together to buy 10 ukuleles?" I'm like, "Absolutely." So we have 10 ukuleles, and the students are learning how to play ukulele. So it's been awesome. It's been fun for them. It's been fun for Leo. It's just been a great, a great experience for them, for sure. And then we have the full-time social worker, the full-time special education teacher with Colleen, and then we have a teaching assistant who is there full-time as well. So that's the current staffing at the alternative center at this time. Enrollment. 10 students are currently there. Six are special education, and four are general education students. We had two students who actually were there just for the first semester and graduated. They earned their credits, earned their diploma, which is great news. You know, it was our first little graduation ceremony there at the alternative school of downtown campus. So it was a, it was a great, as you can see by the picture, it was a great celebration for these kids. And it was a very touching moment for the parents as well. They really appreciated all that the staff has done down there to, you know, get their kids to the finish line and to the graduation. So it was a great experience for us.
So I wanted, I wanted to say a few words about curriculum and instruction and connections to the main campus. I was fortunate to be a part during last summer of some of that thinking. So I wanted to share some of the principles behind what, what, how we built the program. We set it up with long blocks of instructional time, the idea being that there's still transitions within those long blocks, but the transitions are related to whatever we're working on. So in that hour and a half, there, we'll have an hour and a half of each course rather than the 48 minutes that we have at the high school. It also means that the staff are making that trip downtown fewer times per cycle, and it results in more instructional time down there for us. The learning is project-based and performance-based assessments. They mirror a lot of the assessments that we're doing in the program here at the, of the high school. In many cases, they're identical. It's just the support and the scaffolding and some of the structure is adjusted to meet the needs of those students. In aligning with the district curriculum, we did quite a bit of work thinking about what are the power standards that we need to make sure that these students are mastering down there. And that's been, it's been a challenge in that we're sometimes running a couple of different classes in the same room, but that's also provided an energy and an enthusiasm where sometimes students will listen in on other presentations from even other courses, and there's a real great camaraderie about it even when they are in, in different classes. The structure there also allows us to do quite a bit of individualized instruction and to support whatever students need, sometimes on the fly and sometimes planned, and it's a kind of a neat symphony each day of working through what we need to do there. And I would, I don't know if we mentioned it in the other slides. All the quotes on these slides are from students, some from the newsletter, some from other feedback we've had from them. There are several connections between the high school program and the downtown campus that are interesting and really working well. Several students are involved in extracurricular activities here at the high school, so at the end of the day, they'll, they'll come over to the high school for participation in that. Several students are involved in sports, and will come over for the sports. We have a nice, there's a nice synergy between the connections program at the high school and some of the work they're doing in social, emotional intelligence at the downtown campus. For example, one student, each, each connections class at the high school came up with a little mindfulness activity, and those were compiled and sent to the downtown campus where a student took the lead on developing a whole mindfulness handbook. She did all the artwork in that, and it's, it's been really well received by the faculty. Every faculty member at the high school has one, and it's a joy just flipping through it, even peaceful kind of feeling visually. Yeah, it's beautiful.
And the idea behind this was, it's for, teachers can use this in their classrooms as little meta-moments to, you know, process with kids or give them an opportunity to reflect on, you know, what's going on during their day, you know, before class starts, just take a minute, let's gather ourselves and do an activity or think about something, you know, based on this book. But, you know, it was a great, like Bob said, it was a great opportunity for a student who's down to downtown campus, worked with a faculty member here on the main campus, to put this together into a phenomenal product for the benefit of everybody here at the high school. So it's awesome.
And she got credit.
Right, and there was some independent study credit for that. What, what we've been able to do, because we have a faculty down there that has a wide range of expertise and interest, we've been able to tailor some of the independent work that students will do for a half-credit here or there. For example, last semester, we did a nonfiction writing course. We're doing a psychology elective at the moment, and there's good potential down the road for expanding that, that, that flexibility. Do you want to go to the next? So I thought it would make sense, there are a lot of colors here, and you don't really need to see what each of these blocks are, but we wanted to give you the sense for what a day looks like. Each day is a column on here, and you can kind of see they're between, I guess, three core cla, most days have two core classes and a couple of electives. At the high school, you would have eight, seven periods in a day. Here, we have really three to five classes per day, but they're these longer blocks of time, which provides a nice rhythm. You can also see, we've been able to make the schedule fit. Each color represents a different teacher coming down there. So, for example, we have a, a science teacher that needed to be within the same block, and we were able to move things around to fit that while the other, the other core courses rotate through, where we're down there a different hour and a half each day to, to make it work with the high school's schedule. There's also, you'll notice, a morning meeting each morning. School, the school day starts a little later at the downtown campus, and there's a morning meeting where everybody comes together to set goals for the day, goals for the week, goals for the quarter, and then at the end of each day, there's a nice moment of reflection where they come back together and, and check in on how that's going. There's also some, some time built in there for independent, independent study, independent work and support, individualized support.
The program has been outstanding. You know, one of the key benefits, from my perspective, and I think everyone's perspective on the team, is that it's retaining the students in district. You know, we always feel, maybe it's egotistical, but if we're going to do it, we're going to do it better than most places outside, rather than sending somebody to a program that we have, you know, less control over. If we can create it, we're going to do it better than other people. So it's a benefit for us, it's a benefit for the students, for sure. And as Bob said earlier, it, you know, allows students to participate in activities here at the high school with the prior program, the afternoon instructional program, which was kind of rolled into this program. One of the drawbacks to that program was that students weren't able to participate in after-school activities, whether it was the theater, or sports, or clubs, because that was the time that the program ran. Now with this, students, as Bob said, are able to come back to the high school. We had students involved in clubs. We had a student who was on the football team. So there is that flexibility, which is great. And it also made it more appealing to students to go to the alternative program, for that reason, because a lot of kids wouldn't want to give up playing football, or baseball, or the theater, or anything it might be. Cheerleading was another one, yes. We're able to maintain that rigorous curriculum with the staff that we have there. We have excellent teachers who volunteered to come down and teach at the program, and to a person, they all love going down there and working with those kids, it's the highlight of their day. And they're well-versed in the curriculum that's here at the school, and they can adjust the rigor based on student need. And then we have a variety of students at different levels down there, just like you would here in the building, and they're able to work with the different students at different levels and be successful with them, and meet them where they are. And then lastly, you know, some great, unique learning experiences and community experiences are going on with the students. They're able to get out into the community and do various activities. One of the things that we're looking forward to putting together this spring is an activity with the Launch Program, which is the 18 to 20-year, 21-year-old program that's also in the same location. The, the plan is to pair up the students with the, in the alternative program, with the students in the Launch Program, to revitalize the courtyard that's on the ground level there. They're going to work together as, as a group and, you know, do this community revitalization project down there, which will be a great experience for, for all involved. Moving forward, additional space to expand. I have the, we have the bodies who are interested, we have the, the people who want to come down, who need to come down to the alternative program, but right now, we're, we're kind of limited by space. We have the 10 students and staff, and that's where we're at in terms of space, 10 students and staff. It's hard to, you know, we wouldn't be able to put any other students in there at this point. So down the road, you know, we would love to see additional space be made available to, to bring in other students. Increasing elective options, like Bob was saying, would be an ideal option for us, to give students a variety of opportunities and different courses. Establishing a creative work or internship program, it's one of the things that was on our agenda for this year. We've made some headway, but it would be great to provide students with opportunities to go out in the community and do internships throughout the school year, not just, you know, we have a group of seniors who are going to participate in the internship program starting in May. But it would be great to get some of these students out in the community, experiencing different opportunities and exploring different careers as part of the program down there. And then coupled with that, expanding the careers curriculums that they're, you know, working, constantly trying to explore who they are, where they want to be, when, you know, this experience is all done. Do they want to go on to a four-year college, a two-year college? Do they want to join the military? What do they want to do with their lives? And have some saying direction in that. But we're very proud, you know, the students, as Darlene said, it's been an incredible experience for the students. You know, we've seen growth in attendance rates for students who are chronically absent. They're there consistently. It's not perfect attendance, but we've seen a marked improvement in attendance. We've seen a marked improvement in students in terms of their academic performance, and we've also seen a marked improvement in their social, emotional well-being. So for us, it's been a win-win all around.
Engagement is through the roof.
And engagement is through the roof. It's awesome.
Thank you very much.
Wait, hold on, our final picture, is it, is the ukuleles?
That's my favorite one. This is great, thank you. Any questions or comments?
So I don't, I don't have a question, but I just wanted to mention two things. First, I happened to be at a meeting last week that let out right when the alternative school was letting out, or the downtown campus was letting out. And it was amazing to see the enthusiasm on those kids. They were all chatting and, you know, like, racing out the door, like, you know, excited to embrace the rest of the day. And, you know, so it was very encouraging for me, as someone who was part, you know, involved in helping to get that, you know, approved. So it was great. And, and then also, and I know another board member might have the same experience, you know, I did have a parent of a child who's participated in this program, stopped me on the street and thanked us for making sure this happened. And, you know, that's the best thing, you know, there's a lot of stuff that we do that people aren't so psyched about. And, and this was so wonderful to have someone come up and say, you know, "Thank you. This made a huge difference in, in my son's life." So, thank you.
Any questions? Sherry?
So just thank you for the presentation and for the inclusion of the photos, because I think seeing these smiling faces does connect it for us. I guess my question is just related to the, the space, like, was the plan, because I think we've demonstrated that this can be kind of a pay, you know, break-even proposal. So is there a plan to kind of go scout out space, put together?
We have been, and we're going, we're continuing to scout out different possibilities. There's always, you know, there's one or two things sort of in the hopper that we're trying to get to a place that we're comfortable talking about, once we know for sure. But yes, we are, because I, could you speak a little bit to, if we had more space, about how many students do you think would be, you said you had a few that are ready to go already, about how many students do you think would need, and what about any, would there be additional staffing needs as well?
I think at this point, if we had the space, we could do 15, maybe 18 students with the current staffing that we have. I think beyond that, we would have to relook at, you know, the staffing needs. You know, but the, the nature of the way the classes are run and being able to, you know, group students by grade level at times in different classes for electives or academic classes, math, whatever it might be, it provides us the flexibility to, to work with, I would say, 15, comfortably 18, you know, with the additional space.
So you have the staffing in place to, to go up almost double, almost 80%, if you go up to 18 or so, right? And it's just the space. So yes, we are looking at some options. We have found that there's a, a great benefit to being where they are in the building, because of the proximity to Darlene, and Jill, and the department, and, and all of us. There's an efficiency there, as far as a dedicated administrator on site and things, because we're able to provide any kind of supervision or anything that might be needed, although it does run quite well. But we're there. So there is a benefit there. You, you mentioned the piece with Launch and the partnership there. So there's some real strengths and benefits to being co-located with us, and so we're taking it away to see what we can do.
Is that also downtown specifically, or, I mean, is it helpful to be downtown, or is it, could it be really anywhere in town?
Well, I'll let you guys talk.
From my perspective, and I can let you guys speak to it, but being downtown provides easy access to a lot of opportunities for the students, you know, talking about the internship program, or, you know, developing that, you know, kids can walk out the door and get to an internship experience, rather than, you know, having to get on a bus and come back into town to do something. So, I don't know if you guys have any thoughts.
Just logistically, too, a lot of the students are able to walk home and wa, or walk to certain places, or walk to their job, or walk, and that also builds independence, and, and it's just nice to be in town, I think.
And, and added benefit is, we, several lessons now, there, and more and more are involving the community and going out into the community.
Just one more question on number of kids. If you weren't limited from a staff perspective, would you go beyond 15 or 18 kids, or is it really a, a small pool?
It's a small pool, and I don't see us going much beyond, you know, 18. And again, that number, it fluctuates, you know, because one of the benefits of the program is, it's not, once you're in the alternative, or, once you're in downtown campus, it doesn't mean you stay in downtown campus.
Right, yeah, that was going to be my next question.
If you're able to come back to the, to the high school, yeah, we encourage that. In fact, we're, we're having a student do some transitioning back to the high school now, as a senior, and he's, you know, wants to come back in and take part of the, of the second semester here in the senior, and we're flexible enough to be able to allow him to do that. You know, I don't foresee, you know, numbers going much beyond 18 at any point, if at all.
Okay. Okay.
So I, thank you for this. And, and again, I personally know someone that's involved in this program, and she called me after the graduation hysterically crying, saying how amazing that you guys all did, and, or what you did for them, and these kids, and how impactful this program is for them. And, you know, I hope we can grow it, because, you know, he stayed in this town because of that, and, and he has launched into like, he's like a different kid. So thank you, and hopefully we'll be able to grow it and help even more kids. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other, oh, yeah?
And this, this may be a question for Darlene, but do we have the opportunity, if, you know, this is the inaugural year, so, you know, people are starting to get comfortable with it and, and understanding it. Do we have the opportunity to bring any more out-of-district placements back as we sort of get comfortable?
I think it's really safe to say, because it's already happened, that probably annually there will be a few students who had been outplaced that we can offer this as an option to. And we didn't have that option prior to this year. And, you know, whether they choose to avail themselves of it or not is their decision, but having the option affords us the possibility of being able to work with the situation in terms of avoiding litigation and saying, you know, "We have this program." It's, even before it was proven to be as successful as it is, the opportunity that we can provide is easily explainable and defensible. And so, you know, we were, we've already been in a situation of being able to say, "I'm really sorry, but, you know, outplacement isn't necessary because we have this as an option." And the result of that situation was that those families chose to unilaterally place their children outside of the district, you know, without any support. And that's a new thing. So there's great value in that, and there's promise in that, and I think there's a future in that. And, you know, it, it's very much in our favor to be able to offer a program. And I also would just like to say that these people are being very humble. The department chairs for English, Mathematics, and Social Studies volunteered to teach in this program. So, you know, the years of wisdom and experience that they have, the knowledge and breadth of curriculum is just second to none. The clinical and special education support decisions that were made around who is in those positions have transformed this program. So the people that you see sitting at that table, and probably four other people who aren't, are really behind the success of this program, they aren't, are really behind the success of this program, they, not only in terms of their knowledge and expertise, but their personalities and their relationships that they have created with kids has caused them to feel comfortable about coming to school. You need to understand the profile of students that we're talking about. These are kids that couldn't bring themselves to attend school ever. They're coming every day. They're successful. Their curriculum is based in, you know, the work that they did with Jill and her people on, you know, a bona fide high school curriculum. So this is a, this is a huge, successful experience, and families now know that. And you're hearing the details of that. And I was at the graduation ceremony, and it was deeply emotional for those parents. And it saved the lives of those kids, I really believe that, so. I know I gave you more than you asked for. Sometimes I do that. It's all good.
Thank you all for the great work that you're doing. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
All right, next up is school start and end times update with Dr. Luzzi.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanted to share with the board an update on some of the work that we're doing and some of our thinking around the school start times, and certainly open it up for any feedback or conversation or discussion afterwards, and certainly any questions as well. So I thought we'd start just sharing the highlights from the study that was performed in January. I know we had talked about doing this, and we had a little bit of back and forth with the TAS group, so I just wanted to hit a couple of points. We've begun the traffic control at the high school and Saks bus exits. That's working well. It's not what you might call it a game changer, you know, it's, we're not all of a sudden finding fifteen minutes of time or anything too significant, but it's certainly a few minutes, and it eases the traffic, I think, for everyone. We're going to continue doing that regardless, because I think we're, we're teaching people to be a little patient right at those times. And then I think it does truly help everybody and all of the traffic flow more smoothly afterwards. So we have our campus monitors who are controlling traffic for us at the high school dismissal at where the bus exit and at the four-way stop with South. And then we have another, another one working down at Saks at their dismissal to do the same off, onto Farm Road there. Also in the study, talked about the need, if we did add additional buses, that where they would go remains a question, since the high school lot is at capacity. I asked him to take a hard look at the high school lot, just to see, could we have a few more buses fit in there? His findings were no, you really can't, you truly are at capacity back there for what you need. He shared with us also, there's an option to park some additional buses at the back of Saks, approximately six along the tree line that separates the rear of the school from the personal property and playing fields back there. We need to relocate about fifteen to sixteen passenger cars that presently park there regularly. And he said one consideration's converting the grassed island in the rear of the middle school into a passenger car parking area. Maybe they could move over to, to that spot. There's been some preliminary conversation about a road from the back of the high school into Waveney that could ease some congestion here at the high school in the morning and the afternoon. But those conversations are very preliminary, so we're, I'm going to continue having them with some of the town folks to talk about. But that was another recommendation, that if that could be there to ease some of the traffic in the morning, parents that drop off could drop off and keep going out the back, and in the afternoon it could help to ease some of the pressure on Farm Road and South. If the elementary buses are on, if the elementary schools are on the first tier at or around seven thirty-five in the morning, we'd have to add a few buses, because we shouldn't expect students to walk to school in the dark, not the elementary students there. So, again, these are findings and highlights from the report with some of my additions, but that was there in the report. The physical limitations at Saks for embarkation of students in the afternoon is challenging. It creates a need for Saks to be the third tier if it's to run on one schedule. As such, morning buses can drop and roll as they are staggered, so that's not really a problem. But in the afternoons, a first wave of buses would transport Saks students who reside or are being transported to the north end of town. The second wave of dismissal would transport students to the south end of town. That could get students home at approximately the same time. It's a theory, however, and it really is subject to routing based on where students live and some other complexity that comes into it, but it should hold up, given significant work and adjustments. It does require additional supervision for the students who are in the second wave, since they wouldn't be dismissed until approximately ten minutes after the first wave, because it would take about that long for the students to leave their rooms, go to the buses, get on the buses, and then get the buses off the lot. And then the set, the next wave of buses have to be able to move in. So maybe ten minutes, it may be twelve minutes between the first wave and the second wave. So we'd have to figure out what to do around supervision for those students as well. An alternative to the two waves at Saks is a capital project to increase the bus parking areas around the middle school. That could permit one wave of dismissals if it were large enough, but it is a significant undertaking. The late dismissal of the middle school would have an impact on some parents and some after-school activities, such as religious instruction classes, Little League, any kind of lessons, dance classes, all those things, as you know, that our, our middle school students do in the afternoon. However, with time to prepare, those classes and practices and other things could be moved to the morning, at times with transportation provided by parents. And perhaps in the future even, we could consider using high school buses and shuttling the students to the middle school in the morning for clubs and activities and different things they might be doing there prior to the start of their school day. Although that's, again, hypothetical, we have to see how it all worked out, but that's a possibility. So, that's for the report, that's generally the information he shared. But here in the district, we've been doing quite a bit of work, trying to develop scenarios that have the first wave of schools, regardless of who's on that tier, beginning at eight o'clock, and the last wave really beginning no la, no later than nine, ten. You know, as you know, from the focus group and the other feedback that we've gotten, the, the end of the day is challenging, and we have East and West now that begin at nine oh five. So their goal was to try to stay as close to nine oh five as we could and try not to go past nine, ten, but beginning our first tier at eight o'clock. What we found after doing lots of different scenarios, different schools beginning first, ending first, what have you, that without a significant investment of buses and going to two tiers, it doesn't seem to work. We need forty to forty-five minutes between each tier. We need that because, you know, again, it's okay in the morning, because the bus can drop off the students and keep going, and they can, it can stagger. So the students can be dropped off within a fifteen, the twenty-minute window to the beginning of the school day. However, in the afternoon, that's your challenge. And that's why we've said this is a school, not just a school start time discussion, it's really a school start and end time discussion. And this is a large reason why that's the case. So what happens in the afternoon, you know, the high school day ends, the bell rings, and it takes buses, on a good day, with us working the traffic and stopping the cars and moving things along, around about ten minutes for those buses to exit the lot. That's, that's a good day. So it, from the end of this, the high school day, ten minutes for the buses to get off the lot, and then they have to travel the hundred twenty-five miles of roads that we have in New Canaan to bring the kids home. So the, that's, there's a lot of roads. And just from that ten minutes, you can't get to one side of town and then back to one of the schools in twenty minutes. You just can't do it. And our buses don't just drive one place and come back, they have to drop off kids all along the way, right? So you can add as many buses as you want, you're still never going to be able to make that time. Again, there are a hundred twenty-five miles of roads in New Canaan, so there's, it's, they're a lot. And they just, again, they just can't make it. So a scenario that has no school beginning before eight o'clock requires that we either move to that two-tier system, we've talked about, which is about a one-point-five million-dollar increase per year with buses and things, but that's, I think, I believe that's what Newtown did, they recent, they changed theirs just this year. It was this year. And they moved, they've had significant reduction in their enrollment through the last couple of years, they've lost many, many students. So they had some buses, and they were, they moved to a two-tier system, I believe. Or the other option to have no school begin before eight o'clock in the morning is to have a third tier that begins at nine twenty-five to nine thirty. And so that tier wouldn't, would end at around three, three fifty-five or four o'clock in the afternoon. Now, if that were the Saks tier, you'd have the two waves of dismissal, so you'd have students that were in school for ten to twelve or so minutes past that, because of the, the two-way dismissal. But those are really your, you know, sort of the two constraints around this. Wherever we place the first tier without significant investment, it's gotta be forty to forty-five minutes between the second and the third tiers. Additional buses might shave a few minutes here and there, you know, you might pick up three minutes, four minutes. You know, we're doing this with our stopping traffic, and we're picking up a little bit of time there, but it truly is just, our schools are in the south of town, we have to travel all the way up north, we have to get the buses back to do their next piece. And so that, that forty to forty-five minutes in between has been important, or has been sort of a hard constraint, and no matter how we've tried to sort of work around it, it's been hard to do, or if not impossible. So something to talk about when I'm done, sort of going through a couple of other things. The high school students and, well, high school teachers have gotten together, they've met a couple of times, I met with them, a small group of them, to talk about the school start times. They're also very interested in learning more about this. They put together a quick questionnaire for students and teachers, just to get some feedback. What the teachers did, they were asked in part to think of their commute and to put it into ways at different times, and they were just gathering some, some feedback of all of that. They are continuing to learn and have been good partners in this, in conversation. They're interested, and that's what you'd expect and want in a faculty. They are reading and studying and learning together, and so they're working to learn along the way as well. Our next steps as a district, you know, we're going to continue working these scenarios in every way that we can, and trying to understand the constraints and trying to see, you know, if, again, we get to that question of, you know, how much time, how late can we go on the start time without going too, too late on the end time? And we're trying to, you know, figure different pieces out with that. We are working to schedule an opportunity for parents and interested community members to learn more about the drive for changing school start times. I'm working with Dr. Bliss and others on this, and we're, we're looking to target a time either just before, just after, after the April break, and have a couple of people, two, maybe three people, who have some experience in the field to come to talk in an evening presentation, and we'll invite folks to come. We've also been working with, hand over to, and talked to them about developing a comprehensive survey for students, parents, staff members, community members, that would include some scenarios and some costs, so that we can gather their feedback. We're targeting May for that, so there's an opportunity for the evening session prior to that, and anyone who wants to learn more, and then hit that, send that out early May, which would also provide enough time for that to be put together and shared with the board in June. Prior to the administration of the survey, we'll be bringing the questions to the board for conversation and feedback and what have you, and we'll share it with, with parent group as well, if they'd like to have input on the survey and take a look and provide some feedback, so that we can get this all together and get it out in a cooperative way, because we want to learn as much as we can about, you know, feedback from the community and parents and everybody, all stakeholders, so that the board has as much information as possible. And we're, we, June remains our target for some guidance from the Board of Education, so that we can use our summer well and use whatever we need to do in the spring, in the fall time, to prepare going forward from there. So that's what we've been doing, and we've kept, June is our target, and always keep trying to work backwards from that in whatever planning we do. And, yeah, we keep trying, doing our best to keep, put together scenarios that we can bring to you, to, for your consideration.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions? Yep, Sheri?
So I, more of a comment than a question, but I'm glad to hear that we're going back for another survey, because one of my observations is I do think that the student voice has been noticeably absent. And I did bring a copy of the New Canaan High School Courant, which is online for anyone who wants to read, it's a great publication. But they, in their most recent edition, they did write an editorial on this topic, and I thought it was very well researched, well-written. So the issue is, should New Canaan Public Schools start later? Question, and the editorial headline reads, "Student Silence on Debate Over Start Times Speaks Volumes." And again, you can read this in full, but kind of the genesis of the article is, says, "This student silence should indicate that changing school start times would treat the symptom, not the disease. Why do students get only six hours of sleep on average, increasing nightly homework, longer practices and rehearsals, and other commitments so important to college applications? In the grand scheme of things, the time students wake up is only a minor factor of why many feel overwhelmed and stressed. As the debate continues, it's important to consider the possibility that, while a step in the right direction, later start times may not be the panacea many expect it to be." So I just felt it was important to read this, because again, this is the New Canaan High School voice. Again, the survey will perhaps be a more extensive representation of that voice, but I do think that as we continue our discussions on this, we can't lose sight of the bigger issue of student health and wellness. And right now, we are so focused on these details, which we must if we're going to make a change on this, but again, you know, the students are speaking and saying something here that I think is important for us to reflect upon, so.
Yeah, agreed. I mean, I think this is, this is one piece of a broader initiative around student health and wellness, and there are other things that go into it around, you know, homework or, you know, scheduling, which I personally like to talk about a little bit tonight. This is one piece. I mean, based on everything that I've heard thus far, the, it strikes me, there's no great, easy answer to this, you know, whether, you know, going to two tiers is one-point-five million dollars, it's a, you know, really big number. If we, you know, all feel that that makes sense, then, you know, we can bring that forward, but, you know, there's obviously a lot of pressure on our budget this year, and there probably will be for the foreseeable future. It's, it's, you know, going through all the various scenarios, to me, it still makes the most sense, if we're going to do something, to have something where the elementary schools start earlier, the high school starts, you know, somewhere in the eight fifteen or eight twenty type context, and then SAC starts later. But that is imperfect. You know, I think there are parents of elementary school kids who probably would not want their kids going to school that early. And similarly, there are parents of SAC students who may not want their kids getting out of school, you know, closer to three thirty, four o'clock. But to me, that's probably the optimal solution, you know, but I think we have a lot, a lot more work to do, in terms of figuring out if that makes sense. And I think it would be good to hear, you know, through the survey and otherwise, hear from the community as to, you know, what people think, including from students. I think that's a, you know, really good suggestion. But any other thoughts? Katrina?
I, I agree with circling back, we need the parent voice, particularly when you think about Saks, it's a two-hour difference from what it is for some of the eighth grade today, so that's significant. So I think that's an important community in addition to the students. I'm also curious, we, I know we were looking at scheduling, is that something that's still underway, or?
Yep, those conversations are continuing. You know, changing a master schedule in a high school is a significant endeavor, but you're talking, there's so many moving parts, it's so complex, but those, I know the conversations are underway a bit. Some of our neighbors are making some adjustments in their schedules, too, so we're sort of learning with and from them a little bit about that. So I know the conversation's going on in the middle school and the high school, but it's, you know, again, that's, it takes some time to work through that. But that is certainly, and that is aligned with Sheri's point, and what Brandon, everybody's saying about, you know, this is, when you start as a piece, it's also what happens while you're there, and it's what happens when you're, when you're not there. And so there is some pretty solid research that talks about changes in high school schedules, certainly having it a positive impact and influence on the student stress levels and the things that they're doing. So we're looking at that as well, and, you know, going to, to a different model a bit.
Jen?
I'd just like to add, I think that, I think the survey is such a great idea. I know we had a lot of criticism on the last survey regarding the questioning, the questions and stuff, so like when we, when, who's formulating the questions, and then we're going to see them before they're, and then if you could also just, are we just surveying, you know, is it just the high school, or is it like the student body, and then is it teachers, and then is it parents, like across the district? Like, can you just tell me a little bit more about?
Sure, so if you recall, and the last, the last survey that we sent out was purposely set up not to have a yes/no question, right? And to try to gather information on what are the important considerations from people, so that we could use that going forward. And the vast majority of people thought it was fine, well-done, had no issue with it at all. The, what we're putting together now will be more specific than that, would have a couple of scenarios that... of scenarios that we've been talking about a bit, would have some possible costs. I mean, all of it is potential, of course, but would be intended to gather some specific feedback from people and preferences, what have you. And we'd be looking at parents of students of all ages. We're gonna, we haven't talked yet through about what age students. I mean, there's certainly a minimum age that we, you know, we'd wanna consider as we do it, but certainly high school students and certainly, probably a good portion of middle school students. The teachers and the community. Because I also think the service providers are important and I think the voice from, again, it's religious education, the YMCA, the Parks and Recs, the other service providers, just to get an understanding from them about, so that, and so that they understand what's under consideration. And the idea is to work with them and whatever, if a change is made and whatever that change may be, so that they have time to adjust their programming for the benefit of the community. But yeah, the idea is to go as broad as possible with the survey that goes out and for it to be comprehensive, to provide the board with, with actionable feedback. And that's why I want, I think it's important for the board, we all think it's important for the board to see the questions in advance. And as I mentioned, I'll, I'll reach out to some parents that I know are very engaged with this and be glad to receive their feedback on them in advance as well. You know, because the whole, this is a partnership that we continue to work through and we all want the same, we're all toward, working towards the same goal, we just don't know what, what that is yet. Around trying to do the best we can for every one of our kids.
Are we shooting for like May-ish?
Yeah, so that'll be in May because it does take some time to administer and then it takes some time to pull the, the results together so that we can share them with the board. So that'll be early May.
Great.
And it'll probably be a tight window, so we'll need to do an advertising campaign and blitz that out and pull it together so that we can have the results put together and I can share them with the board in June.
Great. Thank you. Thank you.
Maria?
I think it's important to really tap into the stress or try to measure what the students feel during the day. You know, do students feel they have to take, I'm not even sure what the average number of credits our students earn versus what they have to earn. You know, sort of get a, a reading on that because they are, it is a race for them. They're just, you know, trying to do as much as they can. So how do we, if we can add questions in the survey that sort of assess what they do actually during the day, how they feel, do they feel overwhelmed, you know, how many classes do they take? I think that would be helpful.
Yeah. Yeah, we certainly can. The, the counselors speak of it often and I know they're constantly looking at and trying to do their best to help our students to bring some balance to their experience when they're here. But yeah, that was the thinking also of what, how they use their time outside of the school day and we'll be doing that a few more times. We've had to wait for the seasons, you know, because so, when you have over seventy percent of your students participate in athletics, you wanna do it at different times of the year. So once the spring season's underway, we'll re-administer that one as well to capture sort of what happens from 2:05 to 7:30 the next day and how are they using their time? And that should also be informative. So I'll have at least two, if not three, rounds of that survey with students to share as well in June.
Right. And it's connected directly also to what they have, their course load.
Absolutely.
So they come home from their sports and they still have, you know, hours of homework.
Yeah, what happens at night certainly directly connected to, right, what happens in the day. Agreed. Yep.
Could you talk a little bit about the experience of districts that have moved elementary early, earlier and what they've found and where it's worked and what, what was the earliest start time? Including like when the buses were actually picking up kids, not just the school start time?
So Wilton, they, when they did this years ago, they made a switch. And that was, it was in elementary and the high school and they, they flipped them. When I talked to the superintendent over there, he does, he seems to think that it works quite well. He doesn't hear any, any negative feedback from parents, teachers or students. They think it's, they don't have separate elementary schools, you know, they stay in the same school as they go through. But it's, I think it's K-2? I think that's the one. Yeah. And they switched that with the high school and it's been, it's positive feedback from him around that. Now they, what they don't have that we have are the walkers. So every, all of their students are bused because we're fortunate to have the sidewalks that we have and the school, the folks in close proximity to the south. I know we have quite a few students and families who walk. So a scenario that-
We would have to have a, a solution for that.
Yeah, scenario that puts those schools early, we would bus them. You know, we'd have to offer them bus service because we wouldn't want them walking. So that might lead to three additional buses or something like that. But that's, is the only one I know of and the feedback has been positive.
And what's, is there, I recall their start time is 7:40.
That sounds right. Yep.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. Keep working on it. Next is the budget update, Dr. Lutzi.
Okay. So to share with the board, at the Board of Finance meeting on Thursday, March 7th, the Board of Education's budget was approved at a 1.86 year-over-year change. The 1.86 includes the 1.0 FTE reduction at the elementary level, a 3.0 FTE reduction of teaching assistance, a, the change in the budget is instead of $150,000 assumption of teacher retirement savings, that has been increased to a $300,000 assumption for savings in teacher retirements. That number was reached because it's the average over the last five years. So we took a look at that and saw the average and, and so that's what we got. It also includes a .7 FTE increase at the high school to account for needs in science and world language. It's thanks in part to positive experience in our health insurance, savings from the natural gas conversion, savings from our insourcing of the print services, savings from the work we've done to build capacity to deliver special ed services with our existing staff, savings from energy conservation and all of the pieces of the budget that we've been, we've been talking about a bit. So the 1.86% budget is very, very tight and it's really, it's optimized to deliver the results that we've been getting in our schools. We, just for clarity's sake or in case the question out there, as you know, we don't develop a budget with the expectation that it's going to be cut. You know, we present a budget that reflects what we believe and know we need to maintain the level of service that the community has come to expect. So any further reduction to the budget will have consequences in some way. Perhaps programming, co-curricular opportunities, maybe another initiative, but while I'm not prepared to say exactly what, any further reduction would mean, I can tell you that it will have an impact on our budget and on our district. So recognizing that the Board of Ed has been a good partner throughout the process, the Board of Finance didn't, did not reduce the budget beyond the additional $150,000 that we agreed on to bring that assumption to that five percent, that five-year average. We were heartened to see that most town council members attended the Board of Education's presentation to the Board of Finance back in February and we've been told that they found that helpful, as did the Board of Finance. So glad that they were there. So when we go to the town council on Wednesday night, we won't be doing a whole presentation over again since they had the opportunity to observe it that night. Instead, we have a list of questions that we're working to put together for them. So I'm optimistic the town council will recognize the difficult decisions and strategic work that's gone into building the budget and as the Board of Finance did and that the board's budget will not be reduced further as we complete this year's process. So we're presenting the town council Wednesday night and then we're returning to them on March 27th. So I just wanted to share a quick update.
Great. Thank you. Any questions? Can I just ask where we are with kindergarten signups? Do you have an update there or not yet?
Gary might have something.
Yeah.
I did pull, pull the data as of today. We're sitting with, our kindergarten numbers right now at 273 and for the comparison, this time, one year ago, we were at 231. So we are up, well, probably 42 students higher now than the same time last year. So that's where we are.
Okay. Pretty significant. Thank you. All right. Next in action items is statement of accounts with Dr. Keating.
Okay. For this meeting, you have two statement of accounts before you, January and February. Bye.
You don't wanna stay? It's not personal.
Are you sure? It happens every time. And that's okay. At any rate, the last meeting was canceled, so we have two reports for this meeting tonight. So the first report is as of January 31st and what we're doing with this report is truing it up to align with the, the budget document. So in the budget document for FY 2020, we reforecast out all of the accounts and then we develop a transfer between line items to accommodate that difference. So just to start off, of our $89,763,488 budget, we've expended 50.9% through January and covered 42.9% and for a total of 93.8. So we have basically 6.2% of the budget left to spend as of the end of January. The transfer that you have before you, interestingly enough, represents six tenths, six tenths of 1%. So that's just a scope of, you know, on close to $90 million budget, less than 1% is being reallocated.
Tiny.
Now, having said that, we do have the issue with special ed that we've been talking about and we'll continue to talk about as we move forward. But just to start off with the salary account, we're gonna have $255,678,000 remaining in this account to reallocate throughout the budget in other areas if everything falls the way we anticipate from the reforecast. And some of the reasons for that is that we're 2.1 below on our FTEs. Now, you may recall that in June, we had a $900,000 cut to this budget and we cut a number of staffing positions. One of the staffing positions that we cut was for an IT, RTI. That actual reorganization actually saved us two positions instead of one. So that is one of the reductions here. And then we had additional, an additional section that we didn't run and some tweaking of FTE within the specials. So we saved 2.1 FTEs. We have leaves of absences every year, sometimes they cost us more, sometimes they cost us less. This particular year, we're gonna be saving $65,000. Our turnover savings were higher. We actually went on the lower end on turnover savings for this current year budget because we really didn't have them in-house established, but we did end up, when everything was said and done, saving an additional $43,881. And then finally, the co-curricular stipend positions primarily at the middle school level came down to what we've been spending the last few years during the reforecast. So that's where basically the $255,000 came from. I did wanna point out to you that as you look through the backup here in the document, you're gonna notice that there is a transfer of $90,000 between the non-rep account and the manager account. And that's due to the fact that we had a restructuring of our tech support department after Scott Barnett left last year and we really kind of leveraged the expertise that we have in the department, lowered that manager's salary, but put them in the proper accounting. The next item I wanted to bring to your attention, as you're gonna see again, every year, we have special ed staffing. And so when we build our budget, we look at what we've done previously and we leverage between the IDA grant and what we're putting in the operating budget. And the reason why we do that is because we have excess cost students, which are really attributed to our operating budget. So we really want to make sure that the staffing that we assign to the operating budget are those staff members that are servicing our high excess cost students. And so last year, the grant funded the BCBA. Now this year, we've decided that it goes into the operating budget because of the fact that she is servicing some of the high-cost kits. And so we go through that exercise every year between Dar and my department and we've really, I think, gotten to a point where we're maximizing grants for the town by doing that. And so you just see the transfers going between. And then finally, we did have a transfer between, you're gonna look and see, wow, there's a big bump in the administrative support line item of about $100,000. That has nothing to do with hiring new staff. That has to do with the fact that we were in negotiations with our secretary union at the time of the budget development last year. When we did, we took the $90,000 cut, we didn't transfer to cover that. We had to transfer out of the salary adjustment account to cover that. So moving on to employee benefits, this year, we do anticipate having $108,456 left in the account. And a portion of that is really tied to the salary account because when you pay less salaries, you're gonna pay less employer taxes. In addition to that, our workers' comp premiums went down. When we did the budget reforecast or approved in June, we had anticipated saving money at that time. However, we didn't have the full impact of that. It was an estimate. And the town actually did an outstanding job on negotiating a rate stabilization with Karma. And that was a very big positive for both of us. And at the same time, there was a reallocation of premium between the town and the board. We share the same policy and the premium is reallocated based on claims. So our claims improved a little over the town and we pay less as a result of that. In future years, that could change. Our claims could go up, theirs could go down and that would be reallocated differently. And then finally, for employee benefits, the unemployment compensation account, at the time of the reforecast, we anticipated another $20,000 having to be funded for that. But we do anticipate having balances in tuition reimbursement and retirement supplement and we'll just monitor that as we go along. We may need some more funding. We look at it every month when it comes through Gary's department. Moving on. Under contracted services, we also have a decrease in what we expect to spend when compared to the original budget of $206,135. The outsourcing of the, or the insourcing of the document reproduction saved us money in this account of more, over $100,000 in addition to the $150,000 that we anticipated in the budget. So out of our $400,000 contract, we're actually saving a quarter of a million dollars by the insourcing. So it's really worked out well for us. But at the same time, we had the need to contract out for a world language teacher. So that's costing us about $32,000. And that's kind of an unusual thing, nominally, which happened as a result of a staffing change that we had this current past year. We don't anticipate having that next year and when we presented the budget, we showed this going back into staffing. Moving down, we put interns in our budget every year. That's the preferred model to go with. We have difficulty finding them at the secondary level. And so Brian, I don't know if you wanna speak to it, but we're gonna work hard to try to fill those positions.
You have filled what to fill?
You have, great. Okay, 'cause this year, we had three that we couldn't fill. So that's great. So moving into next year, we're gonna have those interns. It saved $73,000 here, but by the same token, we're gonna spend more and substitute teachers to cover those sections that they normally do. We have a reduction of $50,000 from insourcing OTPT in speech and that's a variable account. This is the goal. However, as we move in towards the end of the year, if additional funding is needed, we're gonna have to take a look at where we might be able to fund that. Club sports is going down by $5,000 based on utilization. So we budgeted to this number, to the lower number for 2020. As we've reported previously, our medical advisor, for the first time, has gone to $10,000, there's a few of $10,000. And that's basically because of the fact that this individual retired and had to purchase insurance to cover his personal liability for, for providing that service, excuse me. And then finally, in this category, we spent $8,300 on Alice training. So a lot of staff were trained during the summer. Property services is an area that we have had some significant expenditures and this isn't uncommon, to be honest with you. Every year, we have systems and mechanical systems within the schools that require additional service because they break and we have to take care of them. So this is a moving part within our budget. We anticipate an increase of over half a million dollars here. It's $543,878. And a significant portion of that is the retooling of the natural gas. So after this year, we're gonna have great savings in our budget and we did anticipate that in the 2020 budget. But we had to hire professionals to design all the systems, getting all the piping from outside through the schools into the boiler plants and then designing the interfaces to the boilers. So that was $31,000. And then actually doing the work cost $248,889 in this current year budget. If you recall, last year at year-end, we had about $60,000 that was spent out of last year's that we were able to do preemptively to the installation. So the total cost of hooking in the schools for natural gas exceeded $300,000. The annual anticipated savings is around 200, so it still has a really great payback.
Joey, just if I can jump in for a brief moment. I remember quite a few times at the town boards last year, the question came up about the cost for the fuel oil and we shared with them that we were fully- And we shared with them that we were fully funding the fuel oil so that we could, if the gas were to arrive, we could transfer the anticipated savings from the fuel oil into the property services line in order to cover the costs required to run the lines and do the engineering and do that work. In my understanding, you say that there's about two-hundred-thousand-dollar savings there, and so we were about a hundred-thousand dollars below where we needed to be in order to do that work, some of which we were able to cover last year, and the other we're transferring in now to, from, from other places to cover.
Yeah, it was like two-thirty, or three-thirty, I'm sorry.
About three-thirty was the cost. So we did transfer out the savings from the fuel oil line into this property service for this purpose, as we talked to them about last budget cycle.
Correct.
But the net cost was only about a hundred and thirty, because we saved two oh four.
Mm-hmm.
Right. It's still a phenomenal savings.
Oh, yeah, and over time, it'll continue.
A year and a half payback.
It's just it was a painful discussion that went on and on and on.
And I'm sorry to bring it up like that.
It was a painful discussion.
Let's move on.
You're being modest.
Thank you.
We also had some projects that we just had to complete on this, in the schools, and they were broken into project work, we considered, and then maintenance work. So I wanted to go through the project work first. And we broke them into risk mitigation projects and upgrades that were required to, to basically move forward with some of the systems in schools. So with regards to risk mitigation, we had air control issues at East and South that we had to take care of. And so we, and that was prior to the school year and into the beginning of the school year. We had a risk assessment of our walk areas. It's probably one of our biggest risk areas. We have thousands of people walking in the halls and, on the sidewalks. And so it's both interior and exterior projects that had to be done. And then we had to install, with the new boiler system, we realized that it was critically important that we were notified if any of the water in the boilers went down to a low level. And so that was a very expensive project. But without that, we risked, you know, operating the building in an efficient way. And then as far as the upgrades go, we had, we have electronic door access, as you know, to all of our buildings. There had to be equipment upgrades to facilitate upgrades in the software programs. Our demand metering software had to be replaced. The boiler plant had to have upgrades in as we brought in the new equipment. And we had bathroom fixtures that had to be taken care of and renovated. We have also had a number of issues with our roofs. We've spent forty-five-thousand dollars this year just repairing roofs. Lots of leaks, many of them are at the end of their useful life. We know we're starting that process at South. But we have to anticipate for the next few years investing forty to fifty thousand dollars just to stop leaks from coming into the building. And then we've also had some issues with our boiler plants. We've had, especially at Saks, we've had some issues. Those, those systems are also at the end of the useful life, and they're on our capital plan, and they really do need attention over the next few years. The maintenance on them is astronomical. Over at Saks alone, we've spent close to a hundred thousand dollars, which is a huge chunk of money out of our budget. And then we also had to do this testing on our sprinkler system. The introduction of gas, as we said, has saved us quite a bit of money, two-hundred-and-four-thousand. We've looked at the electricity account. I bumped the electricity account based on last year's usage. And with the, the addition of Saks last year, it gave us one full year of consumption there, and it helped us with our forecasting. We're really hoping we don't have to spend all this money. We did some significant lighting upgrades at all the elementary schools this past summer, and we really feel like they're going to, it's going to save us a lot of money, but we just can't quantify it at this point. So we're going to monitor that very closely. And then lastly, we have eleven-thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-five dollars that we needed in addition, because we've added some cameras, and we've replaced some cameras throughout the school. And the storage requirements is far more intense because of the fact that they're much better cameras. And so that takes up more space, and we had to, and we didn't realize that, to be honest with you, until we started to replace them and get the bill, you know, we started to rebuild for all of that. So if there's no questions on that, I'll move on to purchase services. The big story in purchase services.
Sorry, I actually do have a question, and it's, and it's not, it's not necessarily a question for this budget cycle, because obviously, we're not going to add anything to our capital budget request at this point. But, you know, I, I just heard you say forty to fifty thousand dollars in roof maintenance for old roofs that we are having to just patch fix until we can get the, the roofs replaced. And, and I don't have my budget book with me, so I can't look out where we have each roof scheduled. I know we have like one, you know, we have one extra, one per year.
Couple of years.
And, and I just hear a number like fifty grand to do patch fill that, you know, it goes into not fixing a problem, and, and it's just going to constantly. And, and maybe it's worth a discussion. I know we're not, you know, in an economic environment where people are excited about adding a lot of debt to this, to the town's roles, but, but fifty thousand dollars is fifty thousand dollars. That's just, to me, an unbelievable waste of money, because we don't want to front-load. And I know we can't, there's only so many roofs we can do in a summer. But if you have multiple crews, you know, and I don't know how to man, you know, that's, but I, I would love to like maybe look at that a little bit more, because I didn't realize we were spending fifty grand to, to just.
It'd be good to understand what portion is just maintenance, like regular maintenance versus addressing something that's twenty, twenty-five years old.
Right.
Well, and in the budget, in the budget, we do have a facility study. As you'll remember, five years ago, we had the full study completed, and so we'll be doing that whole study again for the board. And I think that's going to be very informative for us and very helpful for, you know, both of the questions about sort of, again, you don't, I agree, you don't want to throw money at a problem that you're, you're going to fix, you know, down the line. But there is certainly, you're right about kind of the bandwidth in district to do multiple roofs in a summer, and they don't always hit their timelines as far as ending on time and things. So there's, there's those challenges. There's also to be, as to my understanding, there's also a challenge here at the high school. You know, we've got an enormous roof surface here at the high school, and there's, there are a lot of issues that we're trying to work through. So we think that that facility study will give us some very specific information that will help us in, in these conversations and in all of this planning. And so that's why it's important to upgrade that, or update that based on current conditions.
The other thing, too, is when we think about roofs, and we have a hundred-and-eighteen-thousand-dollar, a hundred-and-nineteen-thousand-dollar increase to electricity, if we have an opportunity to save money through solar, after we put new roofs on, you know, there could be a benefit there.
Yeah, we're looking at.
There will be. It's just a question of how much.
Exactly. Really, in solar, we're looking at other possibilities as well. You know, there's some interesting and exciting technologies out there that not only help to reduce the costs, but also are better for the environment, and better, you know, in lots of ways. So, yeah, we're looking at all of that and have some exciting possibilities in the works that we'll be sharing with the board in upcoming weeks.
Great.
And that could help us also with the boiler replacements. So if we go with Cogen and solar, the boiler plant is much less, it's almost a pass-through rather than a processing of the heating of the water. So we have a lot of opportunity there. We're just trying to make really good decisions, well-informed decisions. All right. As we move down to purchase services, the real story here, as we know, is the tuition of district. Of the four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, four-hundred-and-eleven dollars, we're able to cover about one-fifty-eight of that. So we've been telling the boards, as we've been going before them, that we're looking to access, access costs for about three-hundred thousand, which is our right to do. However, this is as of January thirty-first. We have had two placements. If you really compare January to February, you're going to see an increase in this line item, and I'm sure you'll see other increases as we go forward. If students come back in, then we can reduce it. So, but it's to be mindful that this number is fluid, and it can change. And so we just need to be aware of that. In addition to that, we have two other minor accounts that are going up. The bus fuel went up based on cost of, of fuel. And then we also had, a few years ago, we were so proud of ourselves because we saved about thirty-five thousand dollars by changing carriers for our cellphones. But we realized that some of the calls just don't go through right away. In fact, some of them take days.
Take days. Yeah, yeah. Calls and texts can take days, yeah.
So I was kind of concerned one day, because I was calling Roy, and then I was texting Roy, and I was calling Roy, and he's not answering. I'm like, why isn't he answering me? It's snowing out. And so I got in my car and came down here. He's sitting in his office. He said, what are you talking about? He got the text message two days later. So with that, we have drivers, bus drivers, and so forth. It's like critical, mission-critical stuff that we have to be sure that we cover. So we moved a portion of the phones back over to Verizon. And then just turning the page, finally, we are going to have a decrease in the cumulative amounts of supplies, equipment, and other. We did purchase some one-time equipment for the copy center, like shrink wrap machines, paper, a cutter, and they're one-time costs for the most part. So you'll see that there. And then finally, we do expect to have a little bit more coming through our offsets and outside support. It's for all these reasons here, they vary slightly year over year. That's it. Is there any questions?
Any questions? No?
Okay.
Thank you.
So February, there's no transfers on February. We'll be happy to know. We have expended our variable account about another percent, which is a lot. You know, if you look at it proportionately, that was about seven-hundred-and-ninety-thousand dollars. Our substitute account was used more than the average this past month. So those are the things that are variable that we'll have to keep an eye on as we move forward. But there's nothing glaring.
Great, thank you. So next is the additional action item. Sorry. Oh, sorry. Sorry, we need to move to approve the current period transfers as presented in the statement of accounts. All those in favor?
We need a motion. Second.
Oh, sorry. Motion. Deanna?
Second.
Penny? All those in favor? Next is the addition of a vote to add a new board member. Deanna?
I'd like to reiterate my motion and be the first move to, move to approve a new Board of Education member, Julie Reeves, to serve out the unexpired term of retiring board member, Hazel Hobbs.
Sherry, second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Any discussion, or?
I'd just like to.
Could you maybe give a few details?
Yeah. So, yeah. So, and she's here tonight, so you can all, you know, meet her. But Julie has three children, one who's graduated from New Canaan High School, and two who are still in the district. And she was actually born here in New Canaan, and she moved away for kindergarten and then back again in fifth grade. She attended Center School, where Hazel Hobbs taught, for kindergarten, and then moved away and came back, attended South School, Saks, and New Canaan High School. So, and in her words, she's a lifer. So I think more importantly is her background. You know, Julie started out in finance, so we always can use that skillset. But then decided her passion was education, and she went back to school and got her masters in, masters of arts in elementary education from Teachers College at Columbia. We have a superintendent that seemed to get some education there as well. It's a highly-regarded university, so we're really fortunate. And, you know, she's taught in this district, so, you know, she's been a substitute teacher recently, but also taught at Saks, and she taught in, in New York and in Tennessee, so, and she's been in the nursery school. So she has a very broad depth of experience in education in this community, which losing Hazel is a nice, you know, transition. You know, Hazel brought a lot of educational expertise to the board, so I believe that Julie will really fill those shoes that we're, you know, losing really nicely, so.
Thank you. Sherry?
I just want to add, I think Ms. Reeves is uniquely positioned, both as an educator and as an involved, highly-involved parent in the district, and will be an asset to the board. So I think it's wonderful.
Thank you. Jen?
I'm also in full support of Julie. I love that you're from New Canaan, because so am I. It's a great bonus. You're Spencer's mom, and he was awesome. But no, but I, I've, I see you at the high school consistently. We're both here a lot. I know how much time you dedicate to the kids here, that you're on the board here. You're actively engaged in the community, and you're, I can tell you're a strong leader. And we would be so happy to have you, and you'd be a great asset to the board.
Katrina?
And I fully support Julie's as well. I've had the pleasure of working with Julie in another board capacity, and I could just speak to her honesty and integrity and hard-working. Just a pleasure to work with, and I'm thrilled to be able to work with you again. But I think you're, will be a very thoughtful contributor to our board, and I think we're lucky to have her.
Thanks. All those in favor? Great. Janice? Thanks. Next is comments from the public. Anyone wish to be heard? Nope? Okay. Announcements and future business. Dr. Letzey.
Sure. First, I just would like to share with the board again that we had the good fortune to have planetarium demonstrations last week, and just wanted to share with you that they went extremely well. It was so exciting to see how we can take the space that we've had for so long up there, and it's, it served us well, but really transformed the experience for our students and the opportunity for them to be in a truly multidisciplinary space. We, we're joined by Mr. Butterworth and others from the community. Many of the teachers were there, some board member was there. And the, the presentation truly was remarkable. So some excitement is growing around the planetarium, and wanted to just quickly acknowledge Tim Hague for his good work in pulling that together for us as the co-chair of the Science Department, and to say thanks to everybody involved. So we will be following up relatively soon to keep the conversation going, but truly the potential is amazing. And we'll, we'll be scheduling more demos so that everyone here can have an opportunity to take a look for yourselves. Also want to share, we've had a great week here in district, as we generally do, but this one stands out a little bit more, I think, for a variety of reasons. One, we had the, the State Odyssey of the Mind competition this past weekend, and several teams from New Canaan won, so they'll be going off to the World's competition soon. We also had our VEX Robotics this weekend. If you remember, Jim Zambrano was here and talked about the trip. They won the New England's, which means they'll be traveling to Kentucky to compete on the national stage, which is just fantastic for them, a really, really big deal. Of course, we had our play, Anything Goes, and anyone who had an opportunity to see it, I'm sure agrees with me that the, the show was just spectacular. The talent was just breathtaking of our kids out there, and the, between the students on the stage, the students on the crew, the set, everything about it was just an amazing experience. Our swimming and diving, we were state champs for Class L this past week as well. I mean, truly, just a great, great week. And on Saturday, our boys' basketball team did something that we haven't done here since nineteen-sixty-two, as they won the state championship for the division by beating Granby very convincingly. And it was, we, we came out of the gate, we were losing nine to one. We were behind. And then we all started, we all got very quiet. And then our coach called a timeout, put in some subs, changed things up a little bit, and before you knew it, we're not only just back in the game, but by the beginning, middle, and third quarter, we, we were in great shape to win. So it was a great week, capped off by a wonderful win, and I was joined by a few board event members.
I warned you I was going to do this.
You did.
Okay. So I, I just, I made a few notes, and I'm going to say these on behalf of Jen and I, and Jen, I'm sure, will add to it, but I, I just feel compelled to say something about the basketball win, because it's so much more, it's, the story is so much more than just the win. And I just said, you know, obviously, it was a historic win, but it's so much more. It's about the coaching staff who came in here three years ago and inspired the boys to do the work. And it's about the administrators and staff, staff who sacrificed their evenings and weekends to show their support. I mean, we have our superintendent, our high school principal, and so many teachers who made that drive to Mohegan Sun on Saturday. It was incredible to look around and see the community and, and all of those there supporting the team. And about the outpouring of school spirit and NC Rams, NC Rams pride, the show of unity and community. I'm not sure if everyone knew that last week at a basketball practice, half the school turned out in kind of a flash mob to support the team, cheering and chanting. I mean, just, I've never been more proud of our school community. And finally, it was just about this, that story about extraordinary teamwork that this school really cultivates, and... really cultivates and fosters, just this positive teamwork. So I just -- I felt compelled to say that, because it's so important when we remember that we're educating a child, that we're educating the whole child and providing them with these experiences that allows them to grow as a student, athlete, leader, you know, citizen. And it's just, it's -- this is just such a great story. I hope some -- I hope someone really writes this story up, because it's just.
Using those words?
I can't add much to that. I could talk about it all day. But it was unbelievable and amazing. And again, like the outpouring of the community, just the fans, I mean, I couldn't believe how many people were there. It was far away.
Oh, yeah.
It was awesome, and those kids just like love each other, you know? And they wouldn't let, like, none of the fans could run to the court, so our players all ran into the -- all the kids. I mean, it was just, it was unbelievable. It was great.
So I was watching the -- that evening's game through the NFHS system, the live streaming system. And as the team won, the commentator said, "Well, as New Canaan taught us this morning, if the kids can't come to them, they're going to go to the kids." And the team did exactly what New Canaan had done, and they kept referencing the game and how it went and everything. Just an amazing experience for everyone involved in the program. And the experience at Mohegan Sun, I think, really capped it off very well. They played great, but they felt even better about all of it, so. True testament to what we do. It was great stuff. So quite a week. Couple of things that we have coming up at our next Board of Education meeting. We'll have an update on our school climate work, the emotional intelligence work that we're doing. Of course, we'll have a budget update, because we'll still be in the process of the budget, rounding third base hopefully at that point. And that's, since it's on April 1st, we're able to set our graduation date. And as you'll recall, we generally try to schedule graduation so that it is on the 181st day of school, and then we have the 182nd day of school if we need it for a rain date or what have you. So we'll have those specific days for your approval on April 1st.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, can I have a motion to adjourn to executive session in accordance with Connecticut General Statute 1-225A? Katrina? Penny? All those in favor? Great. Thanks.